All right. Hello, everyone. It is 6:36 PM on Tuesday, May 4, 2020, 21. My name is Ally. I am the Secretary of the Dyne Commission for Human Rights. Our vice chair position is open and our chair position, I think, is open. I need to double check that to make that official. So either way, we, I will be facilitating the meeting tonight. And I appreciate everyone being here. I think that we should start right now. Oh, actually, I'm not sure about Ken Pacheco. I think he should be coming on board. But either way, I think we're off to a good start, so we can just start in the meantime.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, Ken, you're the 508 number, is that correct?
Yes, I guess. My cat jumped on my computer and rotated my screen, so I'm on the phone. But to vote on anything, you need a quorum of six.
Six, okay. One, two, three, four.
And that's not.
Five.
Yeah, that's not counting me. That's not counting me.
All right, so to vote, we need a quorum of six. However, what about to hold a meeting?
You can have a meeting. You can't make any decisions.
Okay. All right, well, let's get started. We have a pretty good turnout from the community, which obviously we appreciate, and I don't think that we should waste any more time tonight. So I would like to call the meeting to order tonight. Again, we started the recording, and right now it's 6:38 PM. I do want to make sure that we all announce ourselves for attendance purposes. And this will be strictly for the Dyne Commission of Human Rights members. I'll start with Ally Soonart.
Steve Mullins, present.
Nicole Campbell, present.
Roberto Font, present.
Jill Herro, present.
Thank you. I know we have Ken Pacheco on as well, so we have Steve.
Yes, I'm present also.
Thank you, sir. And I also see that Vinion is coming on as well. This time, we can start to do the pledge of allegiance. So everyone, please stand and address the flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, third meeting on the agenda thus far. Actually, a topic that we spoke about last month. If you recall, last month was April, and it was also Autism Awareness Month. And we had a really great discussion with some group members who are on the committee, but then also with some community members as well. We do have some more community members at the night. We can continue that conversation. So if anyone has anything that they want to contribute, maybe ask some questions on anything they may have missed last week, or even just provide some more resources, we can address that now. All right, I'll start. I want to remind the group that Police Officer Christopher McGann did come in. He spoke to us and addressed the group and the town about the autism awareness patches. Because April is Autism Awareness Month, the town of Diane police officers have continued their tradition of wearing the autism awareness patches. Those patches, those patches, those patches can be purchased at the Dyne Police Station. As we know, it's on Somerset Ave. And if you do, if you are interested, you can go anytime between Monday and Friday, between 8:00 and 4:00 PM. I do, it is recommended that perhaps you call first in the event that they're not open to the public due to COVID. The patches, if they do have them available, are $10 apiece, and all the proceeds go towards the Doug Flutie Foundation for Autism. In addition to the patches, Christopher McGann also let the group know that they have seatbelt covers that can be provided to anyone in the community that may need a little patch on their seatbelts that do let the first responders know that perhaps someone, if there is an accident, that someone who is wearing that seatbelt cover may resist help, may, you know, be a little bit, they may respond differently than perhaps someone else. So that is important for them to show that off and make sure that they can be treated appropriately. I'm also realizing that we did not review the minutes from last month. So I think so far, I'm doing a good job talking about the autism awareness. However, it wasn't on the agenda to review the minutes from last month. So Ken, what do you think? Do we need to add that to the agenda?
Yes. Is it, it's not on the agenda for tonight, right?
Unfortunately, not, no.
So we should not vote on those minutes?
Okay. All right, I will make a note that we will need to address April and May's minutes during the June meeting. And I will also make sure that it is on the agenda to review the minutes. All right, so in addition to what I mentioned regarding our autism awareness conversation last month, does anyone else have anything specific that they want to contribute?
No, nothing to add, Ally, but it was a great conversation.
All right, thank you. I do agree. And I think it was agreed on last time that we were going to continue the conversation. So I think at this time, now that, you know, we don't have much more to contribute. Steve, do you make a motion to move on from this topic?
Yes, I'd like to motion that we move on to the next topic, please.
A second.
Thank you. All right, let's see. That was number three on the agenda. And we are going to move on quickly to item number four. I do want to mention, however, it does say on the public agenda that we are going to have an open discussion on Asian hate. I am not in favor of that term, Asian hate. I think that it perhaps could have been articulated a little bit in more of a promotional or educational way. So while we'll still talk about the, you know, the fact that May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I think that we can also discuss how there might be some discrimination about the Asian population in America right now. So I do apologize if anyone is offended by item number four on the agenda, open discussion on Asian hate. The intentions to discuss this type of discrimination were well intended. So right now, this is an open discussion.
I also just wanted, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make note too, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month and Jewish American Heritage Month. So we do recognize both of those, but with the way that things are going right now in the United States, we really wanted to focus on the Asian Pacific American population. So we are not discrediting the other populations, but we only have some time, so we just wanted to make sure that we were able to focus on one more than the other.
Jill, I think you make a good point, because each month is designated, you know, to highlight specific populations, whether they're in America or throughout the world. So each month is designated to something particular, and.
Right, and just to add to that, Ally, I believe last month when we met, we were aware of the various groups that Jill just mentioned, and we decided as a team that, because as Jill also mentioned, this is very prevalent right now, that we would have a discussion on what is going on and what we think could be done to help, help the cause, so to speak. What can we do as good citizens of the country to contribute to this not having these terrible occurrences go on? So with that being said, does anyone have any thoughts? I mean, we see it on the news nightly. We see elderly people getting beat up and harmed, physically harmed, just because they happen to be Asian. Is there anything anyone can contribute, you know, as a member of the team that?
Well, this is Roberto. And Ally was not comfortable with using the word hate, but let's face it, it is an anti-Asian, we're talking about anti-Asian hate crimes. So that's, a hate crime is not an unusual or in my opinion, an offensive term, because that is what it is. You have a group that is specifically targeted because of the way they look, and so they're that much more indefiable. And so it is a hate crime. And I don't know if you're more comfortable with the term anti-Asian hate crime. And as, as a citizen of North Dyton, if I am aware, either firsthand or secondhand of of an anti-Asian hate crime, since that's what we're talking about right now, then it is incumbent upon me, as a responsible citizen, to report it if we had a justice department, but we do not. We have a police department. I mean, that, to me, is as close as we're getting, I think, to a justice department. And that has to be reported, and in my opinion, needs to be followed up.
Roberto, I do think that you make a good point, and I think I was, I guess, misinformed and not competent enough in the, in the agenda, or just the way that I was able to kind of host a meeting tonight. So I do think you're right. If we are going, if it is on the agenda to focus on Asian hate, then that should be the discussion tonight. I was thinking of using this opportunity to promote Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, but I think I was approaching it in the incorrect fashion. So I apologize. I was thinking of taking a positive spin, but I do respect your opinion, because you're making a good point. We need to talk about this. And, you know, it's not the Asian American, Pacific Asian community to educate us, you know, someone who is not part of that culture. You know, it's not their responsibility to educate me or to have, like, to tell me how to advocate for them. I can do the work too. So I think, you know, Roberto, I appreciate you, you know, bringing that to my attention, because again, I was trying to focus more on the concept of the Heritage Month. But we can move along and really focus on discrimination, especially right now, because I think Jill mentioned, or someone mentioned it earlier, about, you know, the older adults getting, you know, beaten or attacked or ambushed, you know, because of their race, you know. We know the recent salon was, you know, taken down by, you know, a gunman. You know, was that racially motivated? Perhaps it was. So I, I think that right now with COVID, it's so easy to kind of use, you know, someone from the Asian descent as almost that scapegoat as to, you know, why the world is in such a chaotic spot, because perhaps it was the China virus or, you know, the China disease, or whatever it was called. You know, and again, that just goes along with the additional parts of the hate crime.
I would just say, it's Nicole, that in my mind, these conversations are essentially the purpose of this group. Not having the terminology correct, not saying things in a way that's received well by everybody should not prevent the conversations from happening. And it's important to speak and to be open to the correction, which, Ally, you always are. And for people who do know better, to speak up and say, okay, this is how it should be phrased, and for all of us to learn from that. So I think that's part of the learning curve here, and I think it's part of the purpose. So I just want to kind of affirm that everybody is doing the right thing here, and even if we get it wrong, and, you know, being able to hear it, own it, apologize, and move forward, for me, is the point. And, and what I want to be modeling for my kids and the community, that we don't know it all, and there is a learning curve, and to continue the conversations in spite of that, so.
Yeah, I mean, this, this commission right here, you know, I think that it can make a lot of people uncomfortable, you know, and it made me uncomfortable seeing Asian hate, you know. But Nicole and Roberta, you guys make a really good point. It's okay that I'm uncomfortable, because it triggers a conversation, and it talks to us a little bit. It, you know, makes me more aware. I don't need to, I shouldn't be embarrassed or scared to kind of ask for additional clarification. And I shouldn't just make the assumption that, you know, someone is going to be offended by it, because I don't know. And, you know, who am I to say that someone who is of a completely different culture than I am, you know, has a right to feel any way that, you know, that I feel? So I think that we can use this as a really big learning opportunity, and just use this as a theme to what our committee is. So thank you, Nicole, for articulating it that way.
We know that there is, let's face it, there is, there's been a huge spike in with attacks on Asian Americans. It's, it's, we're seeing it in real time. And we're seeing in real time the reaction of those who are, who have, who had been attacked. And they have said, yes, I have been targeted because of how I look. And because of how I look, I am receiving blame for something that, of which I have no control. And so, yeah, it's, it is, you know, as, as, as a gay Latino, I know when I'm targeted, and when is the hate crime? It's because someone cannot tolerate, goes beyond not even, goes beyond not even being, being able to tolerate someone. It is a visceral gut reaction. And when that happens, people are brutally attacked and assaulted. And unfortunately, I can, unfortunately, it's happening to Asian Americans who are women. They are targeted, and the elderly. And so I just want to emphasize again, yes, these are hate crimes. And it's, okay.
Yeah, and I also think this is a good opportunity. This is a perfect example of, of how we have to, as a commission, make, or hopefully, help people realize that this is going on. And even though I'm, I'm assuming in Dyton Mass, we have a very minor population of Asian Americans, but it's really important to have these conversations, because the parents of children in school can influence this, right? You know, conversations at the dinner table, they can go one way or the other. It's, you know, you can be pro or con on, on any, any type of hate. And, you know, if a parent teaches a child, you know, what is right and what is morally wrong, you know, that's, that's where it starts. It starts at home. And then, of course, it goes to the schools. And, and I can only assume, you know, good schools discuss these types of things. You know, that it's important to have these discussions and, and help children also understand what hate crimes are. So that's just, just some thoughts, kind of brainstorming here, but open conversation, and, you know, it's a good beginning.
So may I also add something to the conversation? I, I think it is important, important to also remember that the, this country actually has a history of committing hate crimes against Asians. So one of, one of the, in fact, I believe the shortcoming of, I won't say one of the shortcomings, one of the problems that actually came up with the Black Lives Matter was that it obscured the fight of other minority also, in a sense. And we tend not to, to view Asians as a group that have been systematically actually being oppressed. We can talk about the Chinese Exclusion Act. Perhaps some of you are aware of that. There were also the San Francisco Bubonic Plague, which was also a serious problem. There was World War II, Japanese internment came.
Absolutely.
The, the civil rights movement actually involved some, some laws that lifted the exclusion of people just, of the immigration of a group of people just solely based on their racial background. There is the murder, murder of Vincent Chin in LA riots. So all of these things, in fact, part of the American fabric. So some people were surprised to see these aspects of racism being spilled all over the news, the news, as if it was something that was new, but actually is part of history here. And so maybe part of what we want to do is educate ourselves, sort of understand the history of this nation, understand the violence that has been part of the way part of this nation was constructed, and use that as a way to guide ourselves toward a better future.
Well, again, that was, that was, I'm glad you brought that up, the internment camps and all that you mentioned. And, 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 yeah, we need to remember and self-educate and just look and remember also how Asian Americans have been portrayed in the media throughout the years, and how Asian Americans were not portrayed, where we used American actors to portray themselves as Asian Americans. I think of Marlon Brando. I mean, it's insane. And so, and so, and then when we, and it just seems that if the Asian American or any minority group does not fit this stereotypical image of white America, then they're not, they're not equally recognized as opposed to recognize them, recognize them for the beauty of the culture they represent. Because within their own, within their own culture, there is beauty. Within, within the different nations of Africa, there is, there is beauty. And there is, shouldn't have to be a conformity to the idea, to the, what was always perceived as beautiful. And that is this stereotypical, typical, white model you would see on Vogue magazine. And so these, so you have all these cultures trying to fit that image. But thank you, Vinion. That was very, that was very important.
Vinion, I think you brought up some very significant pieces of American history. You know, the Transcontinental Railroad, you know, that was basically built off of Chinese slaves. And that really formed America in the Industrial Revolution, and, you know, really just helped America grow as a total. So I think that that's important. Also, today alone, you know, one of the top stories is that apparently there was a stranger attacking an Asian woman with a hammer in New York City. And the New York Police Department has confirmed that they are investigating two more assaults on Asian Americans. So, you know, it's going on, and I think it's so easy for us as perhaps, you know, a less diverse town, to not think that it's happening. But, you know, we can't let the bystander effect happen, and we need to have these types of conversations where we can call each other out and, you know, educate each other. I think it's also important that we, you know, highlight some Asian American stores or restaurants and just kind of promote, you know, the small businesses that are, you know, owned by, owned, just by people close to us. It's important to, you know, shop small on a regular basis, but it's okay to, you know, promote, especially during this month, the, the shopping at locally owned Asian markets, stores, restaurants, anything like that. And that also goes along with, I think, Jill, you mentioned the Jewish History Month as well, or Jewish Heritage. So we can do the same thing for that. Vinion, were you going to say something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there was, you know, while we, we are here, there's one other aspect that I wanted to, to mention, which, in fact, I've also made this mistake before, and didn't realize that it was offensive to Asian Americans. It's sort of this idea that the model minority. Right, so that's, that's deeply offensive to them, because they view it as being, so essentially, we sort of robbing people from their individuality, and we are painting everyone, you know, group and entire group of people with a broad brush. The idea, for example, that, you know, they are smart or using that as a, that may appear to be a compliment when people talk about Asian being, for example, quote unquote. And I always cringe when the, oh, this, the, the, the presidential candidate, his name is, was Asian. Just this past election, you use it also as a line to, to get laughs. I, I always thought that that was a bit inappropriate, in, in my view. And I've talked to a few people who on the side have told me that Asian people usually find that to be quite offensive.
Maybe Andrew Yang?
Andrew Yang.
Yeah, the Asian mask guy?
Yeah, yeah, I was surprised the extent to which he actually overused that line.
I just have a process question. Are the people from the community who are listening in allowed to weigh in as long as it's not regarding a voting issue?
Well, we do have a quorum, but normally the chair would decide whether or not someone can ask a question. For example, the Board of Selectmen, if they say hearing on a license, the public has access. There's a public hearing, the public has access. But other items, they don't normally have input until the, which I see on the agenda, public input. But this is a meeting that we want the public's input, I guess, and it'd be interesting to hear comments from other people. I just want to, while we're talking on this conversation, I did get a phone call today from a political party looking for money. And what they were saying was, are you with this particular political party in fighting the fake hate bills before Congress? Hate bills before Congress. So there is this particular. You can take a wild guess as to what political party it is, but this. They think there's a bill before Congress on Asian hate. And there were people that are thinking that that is a fake bill, that there's no such thing as Asian hate. And that kind of tells you something about the direction of some of the people in this country. So I was a little upset and. I may have used some profanity in my conversation with them, but uh, it is real out there. It's, we have the history. Long terrible history, the way we treated uh Chinese and Asian uh people. But it's going on today also, and we see it in the news too often.
Yeah. You know, to follow up on that, Ken, I mean, our community is kind of a bubble, right? We're we're a small town. We don't see a lot of that, but it's absolutely. True that thi- this does exist and we're only seeing snippets of it on the news. You know, it's um, i- i- it's a real thing and and hate is a real thing. And um, there are. People in America that are trying to minimize the truth. And when it comes to hate for anyone, hate, abuse, murder, I mean. Making someone feel bad because of who they are. You know, this does exist and some of that it does exist on a a in a small town level. This particular topic we're we're speaking about probably doesn't impact. Uh, you know, Dayton as a whole because of the very small. Uh, uh, minority, but I I bet. If we were to have um, any Asian American. Citizens, local citizens on this call, they could sure give some good examples of things that have happened to them as well.
Yeah, I think moving forward, um, I think that we can promote our agenda uh more prematurely. Uh, so that, you know, people who are in the community that do may want to speak up about this, you know. This may be the only month that they want to attend one of our meetings so that they can participate in this conversation. Um, so, you know, would be a good opportunity, you know, when we talk about, say, June, uh, July, whatever the next months are. Uh, we can kind of promote that. Jen, I see that you have your hand raised. Um, do you want to comment at all? I think that it's appropriate during this open discussion for you to also talk.
Sure, um, I just wanted to, I guess, ask the question a little bit. Um, of whether the commission has considered um laying ground rules and going over expectations. Before starting a conversation like this. Um, I think, uh, you know, I. I tend to defer to what's called uh brave spaces, but some people have talked about safe spaces. I prefer brave spaces over safe spaces because, as you were referring to earlier. Some conversations may make you uncomfortable, but having those ground rules about what is respectful, what is expected from folks. How to comment, how to jump in on the conversation. Um, those kind of things can be very helpful. Um, uh, in a group that I belong to, we have another system of if you want feedback in the gr- open group. Um, based on like something that you said, you can put a plus sign if you don't feel like you're comfortable with that today. You can put an uh minus sign in the chat. So there's lots of different tools and techniques out there for facilitation of these types of. Conversations, and I was just wondering if the commission had talked about any of that or sort of thought about setting the stage before starting conversations like this.
We did talk about it at our um, the beginning meetings. Um, so we did talk about how this is, you know, an an open space that. You know, we're we're gonna make mistakes when we want to be corrected on it, as long as we're a corrected and appropriate, um, you know, respectful manner. Um, but you're right, we probably shouldn't be addressing it at each of the meetings before we start a conversation such as this. Um, so.
Yeah, I think it just maybe sets the mood and especially I I apologize, I wasn't at that meeting, so I.
Jen, you just went blank. We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Jen.
Jen?
No.
If you want to try it again.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, I I got the message across my screen saying internet connection was unstable. Um, no, I was just saying, like, I don't know if uh if you have the blurb and you want to pop it into the chat at the beginning of every meeting or something, so. Folks know it. I apologize, I wasn't at that first meeting, but I think that's a really great way to kind of set the stage.
Yeah, I I really agree.
Part of our, oh, sorry, um, it's also part of our our goals and our mission statement is that, you know. That's part of of what we stand for is just that open communication, so.
Mm-hmm.
But, agree, we should do it.
Yeah, as far as facilitating a meeting, I think it's a, that's a valid point.
Yeah, I can look into some strategies for like, I do like that plus sign minus sign piece. Um, you know, today I am. I'm feeling good, I'm feeling confident. I would appreciate that feedback because it will help me. You know, down the road, if we're talking about something else, it may be more sensitive to me and. You know, I would have preferred if Nicole maybe didn't say something or Robert or didn't say anything, but, you know, I also know that in this forum, I am in. You know, for a cliche term, but you know, I'm in a safe place where I can learn and I'm not going to feel judged. Um, you know, some people might not like what I have to say, whether it's against a certain culture. Or if it's, you know, just maybe thinking that I'm ignorant or whatever the case is. You know, this is why I'm here to learn, and I think this is why we're all passionate about this group so that we can have this type of discussion. Because again, it just promotes more acceptance and awareness. Um, which, as Jill mentioned, it is part of our um, part of our goals. In one of the first 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 meetings, um, you know, we were actually at the Old Town Hall. This is even before COVID. You can remember back that far, yeah. You know, we did, we all talked about it, we agreed, like, what are we all doing here? What are we going to do? And I think when, you know, we all met, we said, this is what we want this group to be, more of that educational opportunity. Because, you know, we can do a thousand things in going out to the um. You know, going out to the 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 town and doing some rallies or anything like that, that would be really good community. Outreach and community education, but I think our primary focus was to have those tough conversations like Nicole mentioned. So thank you, Jen. I um, I'm going to put those, put your idea down in the minutes because um. That's huge. Like Jill said, I think that we were all under the impression that that was okay, but we need to kind of throw out that disclaimer. So thank you. That's a good. All right, does anyone else have anything more that um, you think maybe that we missed or something more that we want to kind of address about the um. The Asian hate open discussion?
I do have a question on it. Um. And and I I know from our viewpoint, it may be difficult, but. Talking about education, right? Talking about um, you know, our discussions. Is there any way that we can tie into um, school discussions, you know, to see what is. Being done in schools and on this topic and many of many other topics when it comes to um, human rights. Is is.
I think um.
To tap into that.
So uh, the one of the first meetings that Ali is referring to, we had talked about trying to get somebody from um. The the school board to accom- uh accompany us on our meetings so that they can address some of those things. I don't know um, where that ended up kind of falling, but I think it's definitely something that we need to. To get back on and try to have somebody. I know I can speak for myself, I went to a very small school and, you know. A very small town in Connecticut, and I did not learn about most of these things until, I think. Maybe junior or senior year of high school. And that, like, it affects me now because I'm like, how did I grow up for so long with. Not knowing how ignorant I was to the fact that all of this stuff was occurring around me. Um, and I I I agree, I think we need to have. Young, like, get it in them young so that we can learn as we're growing, because that's when we're building our our brain to. You know, care about other people and how we treat people. We can't undo things that have already happened, but we can change them if we know.
Yeah, very clear.
I think we definitely need to get, I think we need to either have like a teacher or somebody from like the school board. To be on these, I think it'd be super beneficial.
How?
Yeah.
We also had talked about having a police officer too, didn't we?
I don't know if that was just last month because of our disawareness, I'm not sure. But I wanted to bring that up during our open uh discussion, just in general, which is actually, I think, the next thing on our agenda because. I feel like we need to kind of revamp this group a little bit. These conversations are really important to have. But, you know, what's stopping us, and this is just our first year, but, you know, I think that we can, you know. Start planning, you know, maybe getting a bunch of lo- a a bunch of books online. You know, that maybe we can get donated to the local library so that, you know, this month, you know, the librarian can help, put those on. You know, focus those books for the for the month of May or whatever the case is. You know, I think that we can start adding these things and we have to start the conversation somewhere, but you know, this time next year. Steve, I'm really hoping that we can actually have some action steps in some of those, you know, true educational pieces of outreach. That are already planned for May. So I I feel like we need to kind of. Work on our agenda a little bit more so that we can, you know, I think that these meetings are great for conversation, but. We got to start moving forward and kind of getting some things and putting our thoughts in our incredible, um, you know, our, just our energy in motion.
No, that's that's valid. I have, so this question probably more for Ken. How would we get some of these folks to be part of? Um, not necessarily a member, but to be able to to join these calls and and participate on a on a regular basis. As as mentioned, you know, someone from the school department or from the school, a someone from the police department. I mean, tho- those are two really huge uh components of of, wow, you know, helping this. And and helping the cause um, advance of of human rights.
Yeah, I can uh contact the school committee and see if somebody from the school committee be willing to uh participate. In at least some of the meetings.
Right.
That we have, as well as maybe, I'll talk to the police chief and see if he has someone in particular. Uh, but maybe the school resource officer might be a good person to um have. Uh, come to our meetings or attend some of our meetings. I don't expect them, unfortunately, I mean, they're they're busy with other stuff. Uh, or their their parents, they got kids and they, you know, all this kind of stuff. Uh, so they may not be able to attend all the meetings, but uh, when we're aware of when they're going to attend, maybe we should gear it around them. If, say, for example, a school committee member is going to come, we have issues on the agenda that is geared for something that. That person may have some interest in in presenting back to the school committee as well as uh the school resource officer or or a police officer that. Will bring something back to the police department.
No, I like that.
If you want, if you want, I I can do that if that's what the committee wants.
Yeah, I think um, I don't know if you would take that as an action, Ally, but it definitely should be in in the minutes. Uh, I think that's really being proactive and good point, Ken, when you stated. You know, we, of course, we may need to plan ahead uh on attendance, but if. There's a a specific topic that we can pull someone in ahead of time, maybe we can plan that way a- a- as well. Because, you know, o- obviously, I think most of us feel that they're all important topics, right? Every month or every discussion we have isn't is important, but there's, you know. Some that they, whether the police or the school department could have more impact. Um, you know, on on students as well.
Yep.
I think we could also, you know, if we owe our agenda ahead of time, they could even rotate through their committee. To say, you know, you're really um, like, this is something that's important to you. Do you want to attend this meeting? This is something that's really important to you. Do you want to attend this meeting? So that they are able to kind of pick and choose and we're not. We don't always have the same person, so maybe we have a different set of eyes and.
Yeah.
Um, and somebody that's passionate about that one specific topic so that we can really kind of dig deep, because I think I I think it's super important.
I agree.
Yeah, I think even Ken, if you don't mind, just kind of opening up that conversation in the beginning, and then they can say, oh, you know what? My, you know, um. I don't know, you know, it's, oh, Black History Month is coming up in, you know, February. Um, you know, I I really want to kind of talk about. Something, this is, you know, what I'm passionate about, this is what I know the most, and Ken, can you book me for February?
Yeah, I think, I think that that is a good idea.
Okay.
I will.
Yeah, thank you. But I will add that to the minutes, Steve, thanks. All right, do you want, since we've uh kind of just opened this up a little bit more to more of a um. You know, open conversation for some public input. Um, do you think we're ready to move on from this topic? Of um Asian hate and maybe just open it up for public input?
Yeah, so I I wrote that we move on from the Asian hate topic and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Um, Kevin Smith Junior, I do see that you have your hand raised. I think that that means that you want to um contribute during the public input. So, why don't you take the floor? Thank you.
I do. Good evening, everyone. Actually, I'm glad you guys just brought up that last subject. That's why I'm here, is to try to collaborate from a different um. Commission. Um, I did attend um your last, your meeting from last month for autism awareness. Um, I stayed on for the majority of it, but I had to bounce off right before I got to the public input section. Um, but I did reach out to Sean, and I know he's not with you all tonight, but um about collaborating a little bit with your group. Um, through the Parks and Rec Commission, um, to bring some more opportunities um for children of different abilities. Um, to our parks and then also, just on a general, um, you know, human rights subject is. We we have issues like bullying and things like that that happen all the time in public spaces. So I I'm really want to be proactive in collaborating with groups like yours, um, also like the, I'm also on the Commission on Disability with Jen. And Nicole Mello, so like, we're, we're actively always looking at things, so I'm like, I always, if you guys ever have any input that you can provide me, like, I'm. Always willing to take it. Um, if a subject comes up that you might think pertains to something Parks and Rec related. Please invite me to a meeting. I'd be more than happy to listen in or provide input if I can, so I just wanted to make that um. Known to all of you that I am available to, you know, to talk or discuss any topic at any time with your group.
You, thanks, Kevin. Um, can you tell me one more time? I'm also trying to take notes. Um, what are the um. Committees that you're on again, you said Parks and Rec, right?
Yep, so I'm the chairman of Parks and Rec. Um, I'm on the Commission on Disability. Open Space Committee. Um, and actually, one other thing that would might involve you guys, or if you guys would, if anyone on in this group would like to. Join us, um, myself and the ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gale have a inclusive playground task for uh subcommittee task force. Um, so it would, might be a good idea to involve somebody from this group also on that, if anyone's interested. It's a kind of a low ask subcommittee. We don't have a ton of meetings. We're just trying to um, come up with positive plans moving forward. For some playground de- designs and and things like that. Um, so it'd be great if anyone would like to volunteer to be involved with that also.
That's huge. I remember in college, uh, a few years ago, I minored in um urban studies. And I concentrated in gerontology, and I think that it's so important, I don't think people realize, like, the importance of, like. The engineering of a park. It's not just throwing a slide, throw in something here. You know, I think being on the ADA committee, like, you know, all right, we need certain benches, certain, you know, accessible slides or. Or swings or anything like that, but also like, having enough seating for older adults to be able to watch, you know, the public. And to just engage and not need to feel like they they can't stay because there's not enough shade or perhaps there's not a bathroom. Um, so Vinian, I know that you work at Bridgewater State College, so I don't know if um. I li- I went to Worcester State and I, they probably still have that as a department, urban studies. Uh, but do you know of anything at Bridgewater, Vinian, that is related to urban studies or, you know, town development or anything like that?
Probably, I mean, this is a a big campus and I'm in the College of Science and Mathematics, but, okay, so can I follow up? Uh, we, I I wouldn't want to, right now, I don't have it in answer right now, but I can follow up. Uh, could you put um your answer, your question in the chat or or maybe are you taking notes for that?
Yes, I am, and I'm not, yeah, I'm I'm just curious because I know that they are a local college. I think we're still community colleges, also local. Um, you know. Um, you know, and I, I don't know if any of the students that attend any of the colleges live in Dayton or surrounding towns. Um, you know, I just thought it was interesting that, you know, there was something that I minored in, which really, a minor doesn't really even do much, but it made me aware of little opportunities like this, and, uh, now I'm in debt for my fifteen minutes of fame telling you that I know a little bit about creating a park uh, for the older adult population. Um, but yeah, Vinnie, and I will put it on there. I, I put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Okay, I would, I know, I will, I will follow up on that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and just one other thing that I want to add, because I always, any, there's a few people on, on the group, on the call right now who know me, like, I push inclusion like big time, but almost to a fault that I push inclusion from a disability perspective. And, but then that's why it would be nice to have somebody from your committee join us to help bring in some more of those aspects. And it's not that I don't, I do care, like, and I want to hear it, it just, I'm not educated on the subject, or I haven't been involved in a group like this, so I don't have that much input. But obviously, we want to, inclusion should mean everybody, um, regardless of age, ability, so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, it should, and, and you brought up some really good points and, and thank you for, for mentioning all of that. But, um, you know, you mentioned something, uh, on the committees that, that you're on. Uh, one word that's stuck in my head is bullying, right? And that's, um, that's a, a key topic that this commission has been discussing and, uh, will be discussing, and we, we just did perfect for the month of May, right? Asian hate. Can't get, you know, that, that's a lot of bullying going on there. And next month is Pride Month. If, if any group has been bullied, you know, i- i- it's the gay community throughout the years, and i- it, it still happens. So if there's a way that we could tie in with you, you know, playgrounds, I mean, you know, I can remember being a kid and being bullied on playgrounds when the teacher turned their head or whatever, so. Yeah, and I, I know it still goes on today. So if there's any way we can work in tandem to think of things that could help, let's do it. We, we would love to partner with some progressive, uh, members of the community.
So, yeah, and I think the playground is such an a great opportunity to provide educational information without kids even realizing it. Cause they're, they're so engaged and they're so playing that they might see some sort of signage or a game that makes you, uh, you know, kind of unconsciously include everybody, and then you're, you know, you, you created a learning experience without really pushing it, which I think is the best way for kids to absorb things.
I agree. I agree. And, uh, another reason, Ken, why, uh, it would be great to have someone from the school committee tie in, help tie in all of this together. Um, you know, the, the school playgrounds a- as well, so this is good. I, I like what I'm hearing.
I, um, this summer, when we were able to get outside a little bit, I went to, um, a park, I think it was out in maybe a Kushnet, and they had a story, so they had Where the Wild Things Grow, I think, I don't even remember the name of the story. Um, and you, as you walked, you read the story. Um, and initially, you know, we had like our bikes out there, and it was up rocks and you had to climb stairs. And there was such a huge community that wouldn't be able to do that. And I just think, like, if we had something around here that everybody could go to and everybody could, you know, take at their own pace and, and it was available, I think that would be really amazing. There was a ton of cars there. Um, so there were people that were scattered throughout. I just think about, you know, or if I had a, a child in a stroller, you know, we wouldn't be able to do that. Um, there's the hiking trails in, in Swansea. Uh, unless, unless you can be physically, like, walking, you can't, you can't do any of those things. So let us know if there's anything that you need. Um, and, and I'll be there, because I think it's so important, so.
What do you guys do during the summer? Do, um, are there like band concerts during the summer? Um, this will be probably one of my first summers here in Dayton where we can actually do something. Last summer was a wash, my first summer here.
You literally just took the words out of my mouth, because I was like, oh, I have to add one more thing. It, it's not approved yet, but we're in discussions. I'm trying to set up a concert in the park on July tenth. Um, I'm going through the motions to be able to present it to my commission and get it approved. One of my, like, key proponents to this is to not just have a concert in the park. I, I'm gonna send up, you'll, people will see invitations. I'm gonna send out invitations to the police department, the fire department, the Lions Club, WAGS, every committee and commission in this town, because I want, and obviously, we're gonna have to adhere, we're gonna have to really be careful with if we have any social distancing guidelines in place and things like that, how many people we can group together. But I would love for everybody who's on a committee or a commission or a part of a nonprofit in town or so on and so forth, come down and set up a table, like, and have like just a community outreach day, but also have an attraction, so it's not like, oh, walk around the track, talk to a couple of people at tables, like, so we'll have something there to kind of draw everybody in, but while, you know, the kids are playing, listening to this concert, the parents can go visit various groups and gather information, so. You'll, I'm hoping to kind of get that by the very, very beginning of June, sent out to everybody, um, to, you know, get people, you know, quote unquote, signed up to come down and, and participate.
Now that's, I, I, I like the thought of that, and actually, a few months ago, when we were talking about community events, we were trying to think of how we could, as a commission, uh, let, let the townspeople know that we exist, because a lot of folks don't know. And to kind of, um, go off on a little tangent, like, it may be a good time to ask, um, Ken, what is, what's the status with budget? Because there's so much more we could do if we had a, a, a budget for a table and handouts or, you know, being creative with, with things like that. Have, have we made any progress on that?
Yes, well, the Board of Selectmen, uh, has met with the FinCom, and we got our last meeting, we hope, uh, Thursday night. They'll make their recommendations. It'll come back to the Board of Selectmen on May twelfth. We'll make our recommendations, and then at the annual town meeting on June seventh, at the Titan, we hope, at the auditorium, the townspeople will vote on the different budgets.
Oh.
So, and if it is approved on June seventh, it doesn't become effective until July for us, the budget.
Yeah, so with, with that being said, Kevin, it would be, um, as much as, I, I, I'm just trying to think ahead with the, the timelines Ken just mentioned. Um, trying to, we have to get really creative without any funds, um, you know, or if we do get them, we have about a week to do something with them.
We are in a similar si- situation on the Commission on Disability, and that's one of our main focuses in our meetings, has been talking about outreach, because nobody knows we're there unless they've dealt with us directly for something. Um, and I wouldn't be so concerned with having, you know, some bit, like a flashy flyer. Sometimes all it takes is a conversation. So like, I, that's how I learned about your, this committee, was I was talking to somebody that said, oh, the Human Rights Committee. And the, the kind of ace up our sleeve as far as advertising is really Facebook, and that's the reality of it. Social media is huge. But the, sometimes, you know, you can't have an effective conversation with somebody unless it's in person. So, yeah, uh, even if you kept it as simple as get some poster boards and make, make a couple of signs that say, we're the Human Rights Committee. I think that's, it could be that simple, because we'll probably be in this, in a similar boat with the Commission on Disability, if, if, if I'm being honest with you. And, you know, it doesn't have to be extravagant, you just gotta, you know, just your presence is the most important part, in my opinion.
All right, well, game on, Kevin. Let's see. May the best committee win and get the, the most promotion throughout the state, uh, throughout the town.
Maybe, yeah, we can have like a poster board contest to design their best poster board, I.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think.
Put it out there to the schools and have the kids design it, and that you get all of it done, I'm telling you.
Yeah, that's why we really need somebody from, from the schools to be part of this.
Yeah, I agree, but you know what? We do have a good representation of moms, uh, who do, or dads who have, you know, kids in the community that do attend our schools, so you know, we can take advantage of that. But, you know, Steve, like you said, uh, having someone who's got the in, in the town school department, you know, will, will just make things easier. But we shouldn't let that be a barrier to stop us, because, you know, as everyone here on this, you know, call knows, you know, we can't be stopped by barriers, and we're not going to let something, you know, that we're not educated in, you know, kind of stop us from really trying to make a difference, so. I like the idea. I know, I grew up in a very, very small white town. If you couldn't tell by my previous comments, but I, I do appreciate that you guys are very generous with me. Uh, but every, uh, I think it was like every Thursday night, we had band concerts down at the park. Um, and it was awesome. It was fun being like a middle schooler, going, you know, talking to like my friends, you know, a school vacation during the summer, so it was fun, so. You know, I love the idea of July tenth, but even if we could maybe even do something just with our committee, you know, connecting with Ken's committee, uh, Kevin's committee. Um, you know, even just if we can do a movie night, you know, just rent one of those really big, you know, blow up screens, you know, and just have something that's maybe a little bit family friendly, or, you know, take it on another spin, and, you know, there's so many really nice documentaries, uh, that, uh, you know, really focus on, you know, just one topic or, you know, one person, um. You know, uh, there's an opportunity, which is not really promoting Dayton, but, uh, in Newport, they have, uh, like Newport Film, not the Newport Film Festival. Not that, but every Thursday night in Newport, they will have one of those really huge, you know, projection things, and you literally go and you sit, um, outside in front of one of the Newport Mansions. You get your little chair, you get your blanket, and you just, you watch a documentary that you've never known anything about. Um, and they're, they're smaller independent films. Um, you know, and it's so much fun, because literally, you're sitting in a Newport Mansion front lawn, you know, watching this really cool movie, and we can do that here. So number one, I, I encourage everyone to check out the Newport Film. Um, but also, you know, let us know if you have any ideas on, number one, how we can get one of those big boards. But then also, number two, if there are any ideas that you guys have for movies or books or anything like that.
Um, kind of spinning off of that, a cheap or affordable way to bring the community in could be a book club with a focus on books that, you know, and obviously, it would, the selection of books would have to be done carefully, but I think highlighting specific topics, issues, inclusion stuff, that people want to know more about and, and learn the language and be able to have a conversation that's a little bit more articulate about it, might be something that people are interested in, and a kind of less where the committee and we're here to tell you type of way. So I think that could probably be beneficial to, and wouldn't take a lot out of our budget if people were willing to purchase their own books.
You can get books right from the library. Um, you can do audiobooks, so you can, um, get books for like your Kindle or something like that for free if you have a library card. So I am in for that. I read nonstop, and I love it. Nicole, you can front it, but I'll be there to support you in the background.
Jen just threw a, a chat up, um, and there was one that just kind of resonated with me, although, you know, very good ones, but, you know, kids doing poetry. You know, little poetry readings, little poetry co- uh, competition on a, on a subject. Things like that, I mean, God, how, how wonderful would that be? You all right, Jill?
All right, so I think right now what I'm going to do is, um, uh, we have a, a few more things in our agenda, and I think number seven, we have to, you know, talk about a vice chairperson, but I'm going to take it upon myself and start creating the agenda for next month. Uh, it is June, so we'll have to talk about some June things, but I am going to, you know, maybe assign some homework for this month so that this group can come back. You know, Nicole, you don't have to throw out this, you know, this whole book club, you know, but if you have any ideas, Jill, you say you read a lot, you know, just write down three or four books that we can talk about.
I think three or four right now.
All right, slow down, slow down. All it was, that's your homework, so you're ahead of the class. Uh, but Jen mentioned that we can connect with Jocelyn, uh, at the library, so, you know, Jill, maybe I'll voluntold you, and you can be the, um, kind of liaison to connect with the library, so we can, can kind of get that going. So I, I do want to put these things on our agenda for next, next meeting, because, uh, these discussions are great, but we, we're here, you know, we're almost coming up to a year. I think October will be a whole year that this committee is going on, and it's going to come quick. The same way that July tenth will come quick and July first, so we'll get some more information about our budget in this really cool, um, you know, Park Dayton Day concert thing. So is there anything else, um, that we want to wrap up on for the public input?
If you don't mind, uh, Ally, I'll say a few things. Um, other than the fact that I think you're still doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
But the topic tonight was a very good topic. And I did a little homework myself on it, and, you know, I, I do enjoy learning things and, you know, looking at things a little differently. But there was a study done by, uh, Cal State University San Bern- Bernardino, and they examined police data from sixteen jurisdictions across the country, finding a hundred and sixty-four percent increase in reports of anti-Asian hate crimes in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, compared with the same period last year. And New York saw the greatest increases of two hundred and twenty-three percent, followed by a hundred and forty percent of San Francisco, eighty percent in Los Angeles, and sixty percent in Boston. Some of the cities, including Phoenix, Seattle, and Miami, reported no change year over year. There's a national story, and there's also local and regional stories, but it's fairly consistent. And, uh, you know, it kind of, I won't read you the whole thing, but it went on to say, you know, that the bigger cities are finding more hate crimes than, you know, the smaller cities such as, you know, like the town of Dayton. Um, one of the members here said that we had very few Asian residents, and, um, I do have a couple of Asian friends that live in the town of Dayton, and I sent one of them the agenda yesterday, and they were offended that the word Asian didn't have a capital letter. So it's easy to, um, offend people, even with words. So, um, that's basically all I have to say tonight, but I really do, uh, enjoy tuning into your meetings, and you guys are doing a great job. And I appreciate everyone here volunteering. Thank you.
Yeah. Could you, do you have that link for the article? It'd be really nice if you could include it in the chat. I would love to read it.
Yeah, I don't know if I know how to put it in the chat, but I just Googled it. All you gotta do is Google Asian hate crime, and it came right up.
Okay, and it was from, um, UC San Bernardino?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I do have a question for, um, Mr. Woods. By any chance, in that article, does it say why they believe there is such an increase in Asian hate? Like, what's the precipice, what?
They did mention, they did mention the China virus. You know, um, that's what some people refer to it as.
Well, I think that's one of the problems personally, when you call it. I'd be a little defensive too, right?
Well, I know my grandfather was a Korean War veteran, and he refused to eat Chinese food.
Yeah, wow.
So, you know, he saw some action. Guess that was enough to turn him off. But, uh, we all ate it.
So that's the, that's the major reason there, uh, because of the COVID virus?
Yeah, that, that's basically what it said, you know, uh, and, and if it's in the news, then it's, it's promoted more. They did say that too somewhere in there. Says some of the increases that we've seen is going to be due to what we call reporting effect. Certainly, but not at this level, he said. You have like a jigsaw puzzle pieces you put together, but it points to a horrifying surge of violence against our Asian community, which is. Against our Asian community, which is being substance. So. Some experts have noted that these attacks are probably underreported due to barriers such as language and technologies.
Yeah, I believe that. I believe that one.
And willingness for officials to call it a hate crime because it can't be. Reported statistically as a hate crime if, if. Police and justice systems are not labeling it as such. And I think that has been a problem historically. And all oppressed and marginalized people that their claims are not taken seriously and they're not labeled appropriately. And so if they're, the stats don't back it up, then there's not a problem. So I just wanted to mention that as well, that. Just the fact that we're seeing these increases means that it's being called what it is and that's. A step forward, I think, and. Uh, it's a good thing as much as it's a bad thing that we're seeing such huge percentages because it's being labeled appropriately.
Yeah. It's the truth. Oh, Vignan just found the study Robert was referring to and he just put it in the chat.
Yes, if you look uh, sort of halfway through the. When I even halfway close to the top of the page, you can see the charts, the big charts. There's a big chart which actually showing all of this. Statistics that Robert was mentioning.
So Ally, what is next on the agenda? Do we close this one out or do we, I know there's a few other folks that. Um, haven't mentioned anything. I don't know if they're just uh, observing or if they want to contribute. Otherwise, maybe move on to the next item and talk about uh, what will be, what June will be coming up with.
Alright, um, do we need to motion to, um. Well, actually, before we move on, Steve, I think you brought up something, a good point, June, um. During this public input right here, um. Does anyone have any ideas on what we can talk about in June? Um, I know that June is Gay Pride Month, um, and it can. It's also used to support the LGBTQ community. Um, does anyone have any other ideas on what we can, you know, I think that that's something that we can talk about. We can have a, an open discussion on that next. Month. Um, is there anything else in the month of June that we should talk about?
Now, I think that's, um. Since we've been talking about uh, gay pride flag um, and, and various. Topics surrounding that over the last few months regarding letters, et cetera. Um, I think it's, it's a, a good time to acknowledge. Acknowledge it.
Sure. Jen, I see that you have your hand up. Give me, give me maybe one second, um, while we're talking about this. Ken, um. What is the status with the flag? Are we flying it? I know that we presented our, um, you know, with the group. What the group voted on, the group majority voted on, but what are the next steps? What do, what's next with that?
While it was not voted on, I gave uh, the board of selectmen the recommendations of this commission. It wasn't to, uh, to act on it. We could discuss it, but we decided not to, to vote on it. And I don't believe it's going to come up again, uh, quite frankly, frankly, I would encourage. Uh, everyone is, Chris and I will be doing here, uh, flying uh, our own gay pride flag. For the month of June, I would encourage the public, the residents of town to do that. Uh, but as I understand it, it's not going to come before the, the board of selectmen to vote on, uh. Flying the gay pride flag at town hall.
How does that get decided on, Ken?
Well, I am the chair of the Board of Selectmen now. I uh, was the town administrator, uh, just come up with the agenda. Anybody? We have a, our meeting is a hybrid, so they're in-person usually for the select board and other people, but it's also a Zoom meeting. Anybody doing public input can talk about it. Anybody can ask that it be put on the agenda, but I can, uh, I suspect. Uh, quite frankly, it would not pass even if it came to a vote. I understand everybody's concern uh, about this, obviously. I caused some heat for taking my uh, position, but I stand with my position. I don't think that this is worth, uh. Although it's a very serious matter, I have gay family members that I love, uh, but it just divided the town up so much. I personally don't feel it should be uh, voted on uh, by the board of selectmen. So.
We have Kevin here. Is there a way that we can um, talk about possibly getting a human rights flag in one of the. Main parks within Dayton? Kevin? Is he still here?
Can you just repeat that?
Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot. I was wondering if there's any way um, that we could possibly get a human rights fly, uh, fly pole maybe. In one of the main parks within Dayton so that we can, you know. Celebrate gay pride with the flag in that park and then maybe cycle through for every month if we can afford the flags for those.
I, I think we can have a conversation about it. Um. My feeling is I feel like it's going to stir up the same problem as Ken noted with town hall. Um, any piece of town property is still town property. So that's always a difficult conversation and just to give you. You know, outside, and this is my personal opinion only, my feeling on this because, and I think the big problem is we. We want to, you know, choose a flag for each thing, but there's so many different groups. And I've always said like right from the very, very beginning. That I think if the town wanted to make its own flag that was like an inclusion flag. That would be the best approach. This incumbent, again, back to like. Maybe we have one of, like the art department at the elementary or the middle school. Have a project where the kids work on it and it gets voted on um, by the people of Dayton and then we fly that. I think it's just. It's such a hot topic and it's tough. You're never going to satisfy everybody in this conversation, which is unfortunate. Um, but I, that's my personal feeling is that we should design a flag that's separate from every. Group and, and like literally includes everybody in some way.
So if we're able to purchase an all-inclusive flag, um, I know that they have, um, they're not ideal for the situation. Is that something that maybe we'll talk about again?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you could, um. If somebody can contact me and send me like a, a picture of that or a link to what, you know. As I, to be honest, I have no idea what it even looks like. Um, I did like try to Google search a while back. Um, when this topic kind of came up throughout the town, there was something like that, but I didn't come up with anything.
Right now I'm sharing the screen. Uh, all I did was just Google human rights flag. Um. And I mean, there's, there's a lot of different.
Right, and this is kind of what I came up with was there's so many different things that it's like, how do you even choose between this? Because I think different things, you know, have different representations. But I think because we're trying to, we're trying to promote like, you know, one love, you know. For, for Dayton, I think it should be exclusive to Dayton. I think we should come up with our own thing. Uh, that's obviously a conversation that your committee should have, probably an introduce to. Whether, like I said, whether it be in uh, an art class or something of that nature. But I think, I think that's the best solution for this issue is to come up with something that is, is Dayton's only instead of taking something else, because. If it's something that's produced by the town and then voted on and approved by the town, then you, you, you know. You cut through all the red tape of the issue.
I know that, um, when we had the conversation regarding the flag, um, one of the thoughts from Kristen, who's not on the meeting today. Was doing like a rock garden or something like that, an inclusive rock garden. Is that something that we could possibly have at one of the parks where the kids in the school would decorate the rocks and. And create what their ideal, like their idea of equality is or inclusivity or anything like that, that's important to them. And I know that they have it at the school, but having it separate from the school so that it's. You know, as a community like this is our thoughts, is our feelings, this is where we go and celebrate each other.
Yeah, so anytime a group wants to propose an idea like that, obviously it's going to go to vote by the commission. But it's anything like that, uh, you, you know, we're more than willing to entertain and, and bring to a vote. So. You know, feel free to introduce those opportunities to me.
So is that, is that something, Kevin, that I need to, um, yeah, I just contact you directly? Do I need to contact Leanne first? So I need to go through Ken, who then goes through your chairs?
You can contact me directly and then I'll putting, I'll put it on the agenda in a meeting. And then I'll make sure like if you feel like you need to speak on it, um, I'll invite you to that meeting. Or, or if like, so, um. Jen just had a meeting with the Girl Scout troop for another project, but we can sit in on a meeting that pertains to that. And then give correspondence back to the commission. It is a bunch of, but you can con, direct line of contact would be. Just send me an email, bring up the subject and then we can iron out the details from there.
Which is more than two cents, it's probably, probably uh, ten dollars. Um, June is. Nationally recognized as Gay Pride Month. It is. And in my opinion, and my strong feeling to. Leave it up to. A group of people or a township to decide. What, how best to represent gay pride? So as, and I'm gonna, you all know I am gay. So as, so I am not viewed as too controversial. I, we were talking about being offended. Let me tell you. I have experienced offense for most of my adult life. I find this highly offensive because now we are being, we are being told. Well, this is going to divide the township. Let me tell you, the township is already divided. There, the, the township is already divided with those who are pro. I am one of them and there are many who feel as I do. And there are many who do not, but. I can only speak for myself and I don't know how, if, if it's women, you would feel this. If you were a person of color would feel this or a Latinoist, you would feel this. We don't want to be too controversial, so we have to, um. Do what we can to ameliorate or to, or diminish, uh. How you are to be represented. We're going to make that decision for you. I think it's wrong. It should not be done. It is Gay Pride Month. It is not within that Gay Pride Month, there is inclusivity, but. June has been designated specifically as Gay Pride Month. Now, if you want to have a rock that garden, then I would say make sure. That the rocks represent, each rock represents the colors of gay pride and there should be, there should be gay flags. And there should be gay stories and there should be uh, uh, representation of same-sex parents. This is what gay pride is. To do anything else is communicating, um. Well, you will let you be pride, uh, 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 we will allow you. And it's what was the saying, we are going to allow you to be represented to this point. And my experience has always been. In this country, we celebrate diversity and we celebrate and honor people. Being who they are. But that's being said, my experience has been be who you are. But don't be too much of who you are because you might make me feel uncomfortable. So therefore, we need to, we need to pull in the reins here. That's my, well, I said two cents, it's gone beyond two cents. Whether my input on what I just said is going to resonate with anyone or someone's going to say. Yeah, Roberto, I understand, but the moment you say but, you have negated everything I have said. So I am the kind of person, and I'm hoping that that is why I'm on this committee, committee, a commission. To push, not to have others push and force me to retreat. Because I'm way beyond that. And I think that is, again, is offensive and it is denigrating and insulting. To what June is supposed to be. We are recognizing June as, as Pride Month. Autism was for April. Why do we, we would never say, I could be wrong. Maybe there are people saying, no. We've got, we don't want to put autism too much into the, in, in, in the public. Could be offensive. Um, so. Again, I believe it is wrong because it is Ju- June is Pride Month. Let's call it what it is. It's nothing else but Pride Month.
Thank you, Roberto. I think Nicole, you have your hand up. Do you want to?
Yeah, I identify as a, you know, a straight white woman and I. I have to say, we keep going around about this and I continue to be disappointed and when, when this comes up, I wonder. I wonder about this group and, and what, why I'm committing my time to it because I don't understand the process. We were asked to weigh in, we weighed in, we were butchered and slaughtered on social media in town news. We still weighed in. And then our weigh-in went nowhere and if we hadn't asked. There was not going to be any feedback that, hey, we're shelving this. I don't understand the process. I thought. We voted to send it to the select board or board of selectmen because that didn't get approved to my understanding. I. It's really disheartening and it's not my stuff like it is Roberto's. It's all of our stuff and, and I don't understand where the transparency is around this decision-making because. Ken, all due respect, and you've been great and, and I get you're in a, in a position here, right? In a leadership position. That requires some diplomacy, but you're saying, as I understand it, you're the, you're the guy. You call the shots on that and, and I, I would like some clarification around. How? How this gets presented as you guys recommend whether or not it should go to the, the select board and then it dies right there. And I. You know, it, it's disappointing and not that I for myself need the flag at town hall, but. For all of the people who need it at town hall, we're supposed to be. Representing and, and talking about this and I, I just, I don't understand it and I, I'm disappointed and it's. Making me second guess, committing hours of my time every month and, and contributing ideas and feedback. And a collective openness and, and that, the public scrutiny that we all undergo. To be a part of this and then, and then kind of be told what you said and what you thought didn't matter. That's, it's disappointing.
Thank you, Nicole. Steve, did you have your hand raised? Alright, after Steve, uh, Kevin, you can speak up as well. Go ahead, Steve.
Uh, I certainly do, um. And I thank you, Nicole, for saying that because I feel the same way. Right now, I'm questioning, what is my purpose here? Um, we worked very hard on this specific topic along with many others. We unanimously voted on this. Our input made absolutely no difference. I find it insulting. I find this divisive. And I, uh, I'm really sorry to hear this and as Nicole just mentioned. If Ally didn't just bring this up. It would have been swept under the rug. Um, and it's, it's disheartening. You know, I find it very hypocritical as well. Here we are, you know, everybody, great discussion on Asian hate, great discussion on autism. This is fantastic. Give them a topic that they either don't agree with, they don't like, they're against. Automatically shut down. Very, very sad in my, my opinion.
Can I make a comment on this?
Yeah, you can, Ken, because you're one of the three people that are making decisions on this, so please do. Yeah, you can, Ken, because you're one of the three people that are making decisions on this, so please do.
Yes, I mentioned to this board that I would make, bring the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And when I was gonna do it. I think maybe one member of this group attended that meeting, it was a Zoom meeting. Did anybody make any comments about it? Has anybody doing public input expressed an interest in flying the gay pride flag? It was my job, it was my job to present it to the Board of Selectmen, because I'm the representative for this committee. And that's exactly what I did. But did anybody else offer to go before the uh select board or the Board of Selectmen and ask them to uh take a vote on that? No. I have yet, I don't drive all over town, but I have yet to see any of us flying a gay pride flag. I've seen Confederate flags in this town, but I have not seen one gay pride flag. They may be up there, I don't drive all over the town every day, but I don't see it. But you're asking that this divisive issue, be, this flag be flown at town hall. And I can tell you that every month, the Board of Selectmen will be voting on somebody saying, I wanna fly this flag. I wanna fly that flag. Some of those flags are gonna be offensive to me. Right, you, I'm, I'm gonna, I should be voting to fly those flags because somebody wants to fly that, that flag? Please.
You don't fly flags that are offensive to you because they are contrary, they are antithetical to our mission statement. That's how you do not fly those flags.
Well, suppose somebody comes before the Board of Selectmen and says, I wanna fly a pro-life flag. Should we be voting yes on that? Because?
Then that is something that the commission discusses to see if it is antithetical. I go back to, is it antithetical to our mission statement? And that is something we need to discuss. And I'm gonna say this, you already have a slight flight, a bias in that you are not a proponent of applying this flag anyway. So to use the argument, well, there are other groups that wanna fly their flags. I say, bienvenidos, welcome. If you're, we can, we, we can fly your flag and it meets on, and is in compliance with our mission statement, bienvenidos. There is room for everyone. Now, I'm saying, should the gay, gay pride flag, in my opinion, be flown in December? No, because it's not National Gay Pride. No. So, yeah, you know, Ken, you have a slight bias.
Okay, thank you, Roberto. Kevin, I know you're for a little while. After Kevin, we'll move on to Jen.
I think this is a really uh purpo- and uh important part of all this. And just so you're all clear, I am totally for the gay pride flag being flown at town hall. I want, I'm all about including anybody that we can. But the, where the issue lies is all of our committees, because we, we run into roadblocks with, say, I'll give an example with Commission on Disability. The purpose of, of an appointed committee is to give recommendations. So whether or not the town chooses to use those recommendations is up to them. The other thing that I think really throws a hiccup into this process is, and I hate to see it thrown on Ken, like Ken doesn't want it. The town hall is town property. It's owned by the residents of Dayton. So it's gone, that's where it really throws a, a problem into it. And I agree that you guys should fight. So don't feel like you're wasting your time with what you're doing. Because just like anything else, you're, you're fighting and you're working for what you believe in. And it's, some issues are gonna take longer to resolve than others. But when you throw in the fact that it's a town-owned piece of property and we make decisions in this town by town meeting, decisions like that sometimes are gonna go to the people. And we might not always get the answers that we want, regardless of what, you know, even the, the Board of Selectmen proposes, unfortunately. But that, and that's the reality of it. But don't, I think you're having a little, getting into a little bit of a fight with each other for no reason because it comes down to really town vote.
But following up on that, Kevin and Ken, I'm not, I, I would say this to you in person and I'll say it here. Before you presented it to the selectmen, you stated that you were not in favor of it.
That's, that's absolutely right.
Uh, that was your bias, so.
That's your bias. So there we go. Okay.
All right, uh, right, I think this is a huge topic. Uh, and unfortunately, we're getting towards, we're getting at it towards the end of our public input. Um, Jen, I would like you to take the floor for a little bit and then we will need to move on to number six, seven. Uh, and, and slowly move on from this uh topic. Go ahead, Jen, please.
I originally had raised my hand, uh, not in address of this, but when you were asking for suggestions for June. So I'll come back to that comment um about my suggestion for June. Without, everyone knows that I've been raked over the coals for this issue as well, all throughout town. Um, backwards, forwards, left and right. Um, I stand where I stand, I said what I said. I do one hundred percent believe in the voice of the people. And to bring a different issue to example, so that this group can understand how we might be able to codify um some rulings. You can, anyone can propose a warrant issue be placed on the warrant um for the annual town meeting. So if this group wanted to write up a warrant article and have that approved, I'm not sure where we're at with the timeline right now, so don't quote me on that. But you could approach Mike Mullin and ask for that at any time. So if you wanted to put on there an article that says, um, you know, the Human Rights Commission will have the authority to um put up a flagpole at some such a location and fly whatever flag the Human Rights Commission decides is going to be flown for that month. That could potentially be your, your warrant article. Um, and that may be another way to go around it. And I think to Kevin's point, there, there are lots of ways to go around it that still brings in the voice of the people. You would then need it, need to rally behind it. You would need to educate folks about why this is important and why you believe in it and get them to show up to town meeting and vote on it. The same thing happened with changing the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. That was an, uh, an issue that Ken brought up. Um, it was discussed at a selectman's meeting. It was then placed on a warrant article. It was voted on at town meeting. It then had to go to the state. It was approved by the state to be put on our ballot. It was put on our ballot and then it was voted down. So now we talk about our Board of Selectmen, because that's what our town voted on. We can be disappointed about that, but that's how democracy works. And um I think the same thing is true about this issue and or any other issue that the Human Rights Commission might bring forward in the future. That is something that is open to not just commissions, but individuals. If you wanna propose something for the town, you can propose a warrant article be placed on the town warrant for town meeting.
Thank you, Jen.
Just a clarification on that. Uh, the date is already expired for the warrants to be for the annual town meeting on June seventh. And I believe you could have at least ten signatures to get a warrant item on the uh, for the warrant, for the annual or special town meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely recommend connecting with our town administrator to find out details on that. Um, and just going back to what I originally raised my hand for, which was um to ask that the Human Rights Commission not forget that Juneteenth is a part of the month of June and that that should be recognized um as part of the month of June. And there are lots of different ways that we could celebrate it. And I definitely think art and music um are one great way that we could have a celebration locally. Um, and I, and, and recognize that. And that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Jen, thank you. Um, I am going to motion to um add to our agenda next month that we have a serious conversation of where we want our committee to go. Um, I feel like right now we are at a good turning point where we could either, number one, go down the book club and the rock garden and finding ways to, you know, um, kind of being, bring the town together. Or we can go down, you know, the path that, and it, it isn't that obvious. So they're not two paths that we can go down. Um, but then also bring up these, these tough conversations and figure it out and, you know, really rally behind things. We, there's a way that we can do both. Uh, but I do wanna motion to continue this conversation because like I said, unfortunately, it was brought up towards the end of the meeting. And I don't want to, you know, silence Roberto or Steve on their um, you know, their, their passion of really, you know, getting this moved forward. I do also wanna say in my own personal opinion that I regret that this committee um is so new. Because next year, we're going to totally kick butt. You know, we're totally going to find a way to be more proactive about, for the month of June. I mean, it's May and we meet one time a month. So, you know, not for nothing, we're going to meet in June. Nothing's going to happen because we're going to be talking about July or we're going to be, you know, just having a, a friendly conversation. So I think that, you know, I need, I'm making a motion right now to, you know, talk about what we're going to do moving forward uh for this committee. Anyone second?
Next second.
Thank you. Uh, second to table until next, okay. Um, the next piece on our agenda, go ahead, Ken.
Uh, you're gonna take a vote. And everybody, because it's Zoom, has to individually take a vote.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That was foolish of me. All right, I'm, uh, I made the motion, uh, Steve seconded. Um, I don't know, people can, uh, I guess people can just talk.
I'll, why don't you let me just do it, ask, uh, Vignan, how do you vote?
Good point.
Voting on the motion to continue this conversation till uh next month. You wanna repeat the motion again, Ally?
Yes, please, please do.
Sure, um, I'd like to um continue this conversation about where our committee is going uh in the future and um how we can continue this conversation about where we're moving forward towards. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm in favor of uh to.
Go ahead.
I'm in favor of, so that we continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Cole Campbell?
Yes, in favor.
Uh, Roberto?
Yes, I am in favor. May I say something?
That would have been during discussion, but.
Never mind.
I'm not the chair.
I'll observe it for next, next meeting.
Is that a yes?
It is a yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Uh, Joe?
Yeah.
And Ally?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's easy for me, I'm looking at the screen, I can go across the name.
Okay, Ken, do you think that you'll be able to do that moving forward every time that we need to do it? I just feel like it's a little bit faster and everyone just kind of talks over each other. Okay, right now it's eight eighteen, I know that we have the um, the Zoom until about eight thirty. Uh, we can be conscious of time, we probably can go over, but I don't think that we'll need to do that. Um, Ken, I am concerned about number six on the agenda because we need to have an open interview process for the three candidates. Um, right now I see that um, we may only have one person on our call right now who is a candidate who submitted their application.
Yeah, you can uh interview that person. You can make a rec- recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for our May twelfth meeting, if you approve that person or deny that person. And then you can invite the two other people that were interested uh to come to our June meeting and they can be interviewed. Uh, because I think now we're down three people. So, uh, but you can.
Can you actually clarify that? Is Sean um completely off the committee or is he just?
My understanding that he was leaving the committee and he hopes to come back when things get better.
Okay, so right now we need to replace Sean and Bob and we always had one extra uh vacancy, right?
Yep.
How many members are supposed to be on the committee, eleven?
Eleven.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I thought it was only ten.
So you can uh, you can interview Jen, members can uh ask her questions. I can't ask any questions because I'll be voting at the next meeting whether or not to approve uh Jen as a member, if that's the recommendation of the uh commission here. But uh obviously you wanna ask questions related to what the Human Rights Committee is doing and make sure that they're supporting human rights, so.
Sure, not that we need to drag this on any longer because really I know that it has been on our agenda and I regret not being able to um, you know, address this sooner. But is it possible if we were to make it a little bit, you know, more official and invite the candidates again till, to June, so that we can interview them all three at the exact same time? Or not the same time, but?
Yeah, no, I get it. If that's what you wanna do, sure, you can do that.
Jen, I appreciate you coming on.
Sorry, Ally, I just wanted to say too, you know, next, next month, we have a lot already on our agenda as well because we have gay pride, we have Juneteenth. So I just don't wanna, I, I don't, I don't want that meeting to push it again.
I know.
You know what?
I don't.
I feel that if we could, um, if there are three openings and we have a candidate right now who stayed on this call the whole time, let's ask a few questions and make a decision on one. That's what I recommend.
I agree, Steve, thank you.
All right, let's do it. Jen, are you ready?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Um, we do receive your application um in your resume. I just received that tonight, actually, thanks to you. Um, so I, I appreciate you passing that along. Uh, tonight we're going to ask you a few questions. Um, who on this committee wants to start first? Or, you know what, why don't we, uh, Jen, can you take maybe two minutes, no more than two minutes and just um tell us why you wanna be a part of this committee? Tell us a little bit about yourself and then we'll jump in on questions. Do you wanna start? Two minutes.
Sure, my name is Jen Dychkowski. Um, I've been a resident of Dayton for the last ten years. Um, I am a parent in town, I have two children in the school system. My husband is an employee of the school district. And um, let's see, I've spent probably about eighteen years of my professional career working in social justice um positions professionally. Um, particularly in the nonprofit arena around um diversity, equity and inclusion programming um for girls and young women. Um, I am currently serving in my place of business on our diversity, equity and inclusion um steering committee. I have um, I, that's, I guess that's my two minute. Whatever questions you have for me, I can, I could probably answer.
All right, that's great. Uh, thank you, that's perfect. Steve, do you wanna start? I see that you're unmuted.
Oh, well, um, Jen kinda just answered my first question. Basically, you know, tell me about some of the experiences you've had in the advancement of uh human rights and equality. You have any other examples? You just gave some examples of committees. Uh, but any other organizations that you've been involved with where you have actually uh seen an impact and have made a difference?
Um, so, I mean, when I worked for Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts, I did a lot of um grant writing, Department of Justice um grants. Um, we had uh state uh funded grants for programming to bring programming into uh places where girls were not accessing Girl Scouts previously. Um, I did a lot of work in the cities of New Bedford, Brockton, um Lawrence, um Roxbury, um Mattapan, um, where else did we have programs? Uh, Framingham, um, all over the place, really. So um, these were um girls who had never either, due to income or transportation or other barriers to participation, um participated in Girl Scouts previously. So we were able to get in um programs that were run at no cost to the girls or their families um and be able to have them be part of Girl Scouts. We were able to bring them out to Girl Scout camp. Um, I had, I remember bringing a group of girls from the city of Brockton um down to Plymouth. And um we have an indoor rock wall at the camp down there. And um these girls all got there and there's no way I'm gonna climb that wall. And by the end of the night, they all rang the bell. Um, and it was a huge uh confidence builder, I think, for all of them. Um, just to have that opportunity to do that with each other, to cheer each other on. Um, it was really great community building. Um, so I've had opportunities like that professionally. Um, personally, I've done a lot of advocating um for disability rights. Um, my son has autism um and has been involved with services since he was two years old, um and he was not speaking. Um, so I've had to do a lot of self-education and um, you know, I've, I've done a lot of learning there. And I, I, I think I'm lucky because I'm an educated adult. Um, there's a lot of disadvantage for folks that don't have um access to information about what is available for services for children with disabilities. Um, and so I've done a lot of individual talking with families. Um, anybody who comes to me and asks for help or advice, I'm happy to sit down and help look up laws um and, and, you know, try to help them find advocates or whatever resources they might.
Excellent, thank you. I think that was a, a really good answer. Um, Steve, do you have another question or perhaps a follow-up question?
No, no, I, I wanna, I know we only have four minutes left and um I, I just wanted to hear uh Jen's perspective on, you know, some of her background and what, what she has accomplished in the area of human rights. So thank you and feel free, anyone else.
Jen, uh, Jill, I see that you're unmuted. Do you have a question, Jill?
Oh, we had some questions. Um, so this is not my question, but somebody else in, um, the commission had asked if you consider human rights to be a, a politically driven committee? Like what are your thoughts between human rights and, um, the politics within the community?
Sure. Um, I don't believe that the Human Rights Commission is a politically driven commission with a political agenda. I think that um, human rights are basic rights, um, for all human beings. Um, it's one of the things I'm, I'm most passionate about. However, I do believe in democracy and our town is run through a democratic system. So there are times, um, you know, when we won't be able to make a decision, but we could make a statement. Um, and I think you've done that in the past. Um, really, uh, making an effort around education, um, you know, uh, resource, um, again, breaking down barriers to participation. These are all really important things that have nothing to do with politics.
Um, and then two, I had two questions. So I wanted to know if you had any thoughts or ideas on uniting the community? Um, considering that, you know, just during this conversation, we've had a lot of, um, talks about the community dividing. So do you have any thoughts about how we can reunite?
Yeah, um, for the last year I've been participating with, um, the YWCA and the NWAACP in New Bedford and a book club that they've had. Um, and it's, it's mostly been like, um, five weeks long or so, um, each book that we do. So, um, we'll read the book, uh, and it's broken down by chapters and it's facilitated. Um, and it has been an amazing opportunity. There are people from all over southeastern Massachusetts participating in that group. And it's been done, you know, via Zoom because of COVID. Um, so it's been great to, and actually there have been a, a few of the books, we had folks from out of state participating as well. Um, I'm not sure how they got connected with the group, but it was really nice to meet lots of different folks. It was a great way to have a facilitated conversation where we read something and then we're discussing that issue. So we're talking about issues, not people. Um, and that's, I think, a way to really, um, make that brave space that I was referring to earlier and make it a place where we can help, um, because I really think the true understanding comes from the personal stories when we get to know each other. Um, and, and we have to make an effort to do that. I think someone said earlier, you know, small town, we're not, you know, hugely diverse. And so it is our responsibility to do that. And I think that the, um, Human Rights Committee could have a huge impact on that. I, you know, art, music, um, reading, these are all really important things that at no, almost no cost with no budget, we could be able to, you know, hey, let's listen to this song together and now let's talk about the lyrics. You know, let's talk about the life of the person who wrote it. Um, and it's a, it's a, I think a uniting and, um, a universal, um, way to communicate with folks. You know, we really can connect with one another around art and music.
Wow.
And then my, uh, second question was, I know that you spoke about like your experience and, and all of that, but do you have a personal for joining?
Do I vote? I'm sorry.
A personal goal for joining the committee?
I think my personal goal for joining the committee is, uh, my same goal for most things. Um, I have spent a lot of time, um, thinking about my personal values and anything that I'm going to invest time in, uh, needs to align with those values. And one of my values is, is service and authenticity. Um, and I am an authentic person. I live my life out loud. I think, um, you know, anybody can ask me anything and I will tell them and I'll have an honest conversation with them. Um, and I really do enjoy um, volunteering and serving, um, especially around causes that are important to me. And I care so deeply about people. Um, I, I really, I, I think I'm at a, at a very fundamental level bothered by hate of all kinds. And I know that that sounds very, you know, I don't know, fluffy or, or whatever. But when we really take the time to get to know each other and we start to think about how can we support each other better? Um, that's where we can connect. And it's not, it's not about me over you. I'm going to get more than you or somebody else deserves it more than someone. It's how can we all get better? How can we all, um, get what we need, right? I talk a lot about that with my kids that, that, uh, fairness is not treating everybody the same, right? It's giving everybody what they need in order to succeed. And I think that that's a lot of, um, my goal with this is, is I don't think that as a society, as a whole, as a country, um, we are giving everybody what they need in order to succeed. And I think, um, you know, I've always sort of worked on the think globally, act locally kind of tenant. I can't change the world, but I can change my town. I can have an impact on my community um, and, and make it a better place for my kids and, and your kids. And, and, you know, as they're growing up, um, being able to feel like this is a place that they can call home for a long term.
Thank you, Jen. I think that's good. I mean, that's a lot, the way you just said. Thank you. And I think you asked really good questions, Jill and Steve. Are there any other, um, questions for, um, committee members? Vinyan, Nicole, Roberto, anything that you want to mention before we, um, wrap up the interview?
No, my two questions, um, Jen answered.
Perfect.
Um, all of my stuff was addressed. Thank you.
Excellent. Vinyan, you're all set?
All set too. Thank you.
All right, great. So I think that means, um, uh, what does that mean, Ken?
Yes, the, someone should make a, a motion whether to recommend that she be appointed to this committee or not recommend. They got a, obviously second and then we'll take a vote.
I recommend that Jen be, uh, accepted into the commission.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion? If not, uh, Vignan, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
What was that, please?
I am in favor.
Okay. Roberto?
Yes, in favor.
Uh, Nicole, uh, Campbell?
She seconded, so I think that means yes.
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute. Yeah, I seconded it.
Yes. And Steve? Steve? Would you unmute yourself, Steve?
I guess it would help if I wasn't. Yes, I, I do. I, I think Jen would be a good addition.
Jill?
Yes, I do.
And, uh, Ally?
Yes, thank you.
So it passes unanimously? So you need to, uh, notify Leanne, uh, that the commission, uh, Human Rights Commission has voted to, uh, recommended Jen be appointed to the, uh, commission.
Uh, I'm, that's my job, right? Or is that Jen's job to tell Leanne?
That's, it's actually your, I, you're still the secretary even though you're acting chairman.
Yeah, okay. No, I just, I don't, I was trying to write something down and I didn't know if you were saying, all right, Jen, now you go. Or if I go, okay. Excellent. I will follow up with Leanne.
And that should be on our May 12th, uh, agenda.
Uh, May 12th agenda, okay?
Or it's lucky. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Um, two more things left on for the agenda. Um, we are, it was on the agenda to, um, elect a vice chair and then also on the agenda was to pick a date for the next meeting. Um, thank you, Jen. I appreciate your, um, contributions tonight. Electing a vice chair. What do we think about that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if you want to kick this over to the next meeting only because we don't have a chair also. Uh, so you may want to, uh, kick it over to the June meeting. I know it's going to be a long meeting, uh, but to elect a chair and a vice chair unless somebody right now is interested in being the vice chair.
I said that I would do it, um, if, if nobody else, like if nobody else was interested. I just don't have the time to commit to being chair. So if I say that I'll do vice, I just want to make sure that like, because we don't have an actual chair, that it's not going to onto me.
Yes, so.
Right. So you want me to hold on to this until next meeting, Jill?
I don't know, Ken. What are your thoughts?
If you're, uh, elected as vice chair today, you'll be running the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I, that doesn't bother me. Um, I just, I don't know if anybody else is interested in, in taking it. I don't want to like pull it from somebody that's you know, maybe more qualified or, or something like that. So.
You're very qualified, Jill.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
You bring a lot to the table.
Sometimes I don't feel it.
You bring a lot to the table. So I make a motion to not, or I guess I'm nominating Jill Haru as the vice chair of the Dayton Human Rights Committee, Commission.
Steve?
Roberto, thank you. So, Ally, go ahead.
Any further discussion? If not, how do you vote on this, Vignan?
I'm in favor.
Uh, Roberto?
Yes.
And Nicole?
Yes, in favor.
Steve?
Yes.
Uh, Jill?
Yeah.
Yes. And Ally? So congratulations, uh, Jill. So the next, uh, meeting, if we go by our schedule, the first Tuesday of the month is June 1st. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
So far, yes.
Yep. And, and we're keeping it on Zoom, is that correct?
Well, with groups are starting to meet at, uh, town hall. Right now it can only be 13 people. Uh, it would probably be a hybrid meeting. I'm not sure if anybody's capable of, of doing a, uh, Zoom meeting at town hall. Plus, I don't know, I think Cable said they can't, they can't tape our meeting because they have so many meetings to, uh, tape. So I, I don't think, uh, Cable will be doing it.
All right, let's, uh, maybe we'll just keep it on Zoom for the time being. I feel like it's working out well so far. Um,
Yeah.
All right. So all those in favor of, uh, we don't even have to vote on it because we always do it, right?
Yes, the first Tuesday of the month. So it's June 1st and it's at six thirty.
Okay. Maybe even next meeting I'll suggest, um, I don't know. Uh, this is a lot for one night and, uh, I don't know, maybe moving forward, we can talk about maybe doing two meetings a month or something. Just to kind of see where we're going. I don't know. I just, I'm not feeling like we're getting anything accomplished. We're having really good discussion, but again, this is a committee to, to do some, you know, to, to make some moves. And I don't feel like maybe we're doing that yet.
It'll be easier once you get a budget. You'll know what you can, you can spend money on.
I guess that's true.
Can I ask a question? Um, Ken, you're probably the only one that can answer this. If I were able to get, um, a donation, right, from my employer, um, is that possible? Is that acceptable?
We're going to be very careful with that. If you want, uh, are we, are we talking about a, uh, a financial donation or item?
Yes. Basically, I can get credit for, um, volunteering my time. And we get, um, you know, if, after so many hours, I could, um, if, if I, I choose, I can have them, um, uh, give an award type thing to the organization, organization that I'm in. Is that something that could work or is that a definite no? I mean, I'm just trying to do whatever I can to help, you know, help the commission out. If that's something that's possible, great. If it isn't, if it's frowned upon, that's great also. I'll take the money myself.
Yeah, I, I will run it by, uh, a town administrator, Mike Mullin, okay? I just want to be careful. We got it when it comes to money and stuff like that, we got it. As my boss used to say, that's what's going to put us in jail. So it's the money. So let me run it by Mike Mullin and hopefully I'll have an answer, uh, for our next meeting.
Okay, that's fair.
Is that too late or?
No, I'll, I can hold off. I can hold off on that.
Do you mind if I chime in a little?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I think that they would have to set up a revolving account. So I would check with the town account. And you would be able to accept donations if you had a revolving account.
Yeah, so this would be a one, a, a one-time donation.
Right. You would just have to set up that revolving account, but Ken can check for you.
Yeah. And if so, uh, what would the name of it be? You know what I mean? Would it be Dayton Commission, Human Rights, uh, you know, my, I, I'd have to know the exact name as well.
Yeah, let, let me run it by Mike Mullin, our town administrator.
Yeah.
And also our town, uh, accountant. Obviously we want to make sure it doesn't go into the general fund. We want it to go into the commission. So, uh, let me check on that. And if I get an answer sooner than the next meeting, Steve, I will let you know. Otherwise, uh, we can further discuss it at, uh, in June.
Ken, it's just like every week at the Board of Selectmen's meeting when people are making donations to the council on aging. Those are accepted also.
Primetime, yes.
Right.
All right, excellent. I think we got a lot accomplished. We went a little bit over schedule, but, um, you know, we were off to a slow start, got pretty, uh, moving towards the end. And next thing you know, we have a new vice chair. We have a new, uh, person on here, um, uh, on our committee. So, uh, I think we ended strong. So I'm going to, um, send this over to Leanne to make sure that it gets posted on YouTube. Um, and it looks like Jen chimed in on the chat that she's going to attend the, uh, May 12th Board of Selectmen's meeting. Uh, it's eight forty-two PM and I do motion to adjourn, adjourn, adjoint this meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Uh, say aye. Vignan?
Aye.
Nicole?
In favor.
Roberto?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
And Ally?
Yes.
It's been approved. Good night. We'll see everybody on June 1st.
Excellent. No, we'll see everyone on May 12th while I'll participate in the next town meeting, show our faces and our support.
It's the Board of Selectmen, yes, at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting on, uh, May 12th. It's fine. Very good.
All right. Have a good night, everyone. Bye-bye.